Good morning, welcome to the April 28, 2020 meeting Delaware County Council. This meeting is Zoom meeting. And we're going to call it to order at this point, so. If everybody would stand for the pledge in the room anyway.
Do flag. States of America and to the Republic. Which stands one nation. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Here.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Ms. Quakers.
Connected.
Josh Vander. Here.
Here.
Just for your guys information, I don't know what you can, what you can see and what you can't, but we were all spaced out in our meeting room. Donna, Denise, Steve Craig Craft, we've got Corey from the Star Pass, Mark Schlescher that's putting on the meeting in the back of the room. Ed, the Treasurer, Pam, and Becky from the Auditor's Office in the back. That's just so you guys know who's here. This is a little different way of doing our County Council meeting, but we've got to move with the times. Denise, was the agenda posted?
Yes.
Okay, and for your information, it was also posted on the outside of the county building as well. I need an approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Ryan.
Yes.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is that everybody being opposed? Need a local of the temporary county council.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Jessica, second from Larry.
Right.
Roll call please.
Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Pangu.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Doc Vander.
Yes. We set up an email for public comment in the county council, D I S T, so county council, D I S T, all one word, at C O dot Delaware dot I N dot U S. So public comment can be made to that address, and I've made that available to, I believe, Jessica, Steve and Denise to receive those emails and try and answer any questions that they might have from the, from the public. The next item agenda is the Auditor's Report. We have asked Donna to give us the kind of a, I mean, condition of where we're at at this point. I think we'll go ahead.
As of this morning, our grand county general cash on hand is three hundred and forty-eight thousand. We have payroll to post yet today. Plus our item for that is roughly twenty-seven thousand. I base that on the last couple tables. All said and done, after payroll all posted and done, we have no more bills to pay. Everything else is paid for the month. County General will be in the red, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand roughly. We'll still have, between now and Thursday, we'll still have small revenue coming in, so we don't have anything else. We did not get our money from the city, which put us in the situation along with increase in EMS revenue. Because all of, all of that was anticipated on a normal basis when we did budgets last year. So between those two, we lost over three hundred thousand dollars, or we might have ended up being okay for the month. So. Rest now, hopefully, I'm only going to have to borrow roughly three hundred and forty thousand, if that much, to keep County General out of the red at the end of the month. Otherwise, I just need for you to keep in mind that I talked to the state one day last week. She said I should start seeing a decrease in my highway revenue in May. At this time, I don't know when we'll see a decrease in the lit taxes because the lit taxes are always six months behind in distribution. I've not received any word from the state yet. I'm assuming by the time all of this starts rolling in figures for lit for even yet this year. Because of all the unemployment going on right now, our lit taxes are going to probably drop drastically. So we've got to keep a real close eye, especially on public safety, lit public safety. There wasn't a lot of wiggle room left in that cash line. So we may have a problem more towards, you know, October, November. We may see a problem there, being able to cover all those employees that are paid out of there. Please keep that in mind. I don't want to shock you when I say we've got a problem, so. Other than that, unless Steve has something. At this time, I really, I just can't tell you anything else. I mean, I feel better about County General than I did last week because last week I thought I had seven hundred thousand, but we did hear a couple unexpected revenues, County General, that we weren't expecting. And instead of paying the utility bills on Thursday, which would have hit this month, we changed it to Friday. That's additional forty-seven thousand, so we're going to do that on Friday the first. And then whatever collections we have, I always do a normal advance draw on May twentieth. That's, we are still doing that, so. Based on last time Steve talked with us, our collections through taxes, this was probably a week ago or so, and my collection currently broke down a million dollars compared to the same time last year, so we felt pretty good about that. Taxes are coming in daily, so hopefully we won't see too much of a difference there, but other than that, unless Steve has something, you know, anything.
Edit.
Edit to lit taxes.
Okay.
Yeah, so yeah, edit, edit and public safety are both lit taxes. And plus certified share share lit goes in County General, so that's going to be a lot more loss for County General towards the end of the year. Plus edit's going to lose and public safety, so. Until I get something from the state telling me when the deficit is going to happen, like I said, that's always, it always has been six months behind of what they, what they send us, so. I don't think we'll see that big hit yet for a few more months, but it's, it's going to happen and it's going to happen drastically, so.
Donna, I read an article from State Department of Accounts. I thought I had it here, but I can't find it. Saying that the lit tax is based on twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen revenue and that we probably wouldn't see deductions from our money coming from the state until next year. Did you read that?
No.
I'll have to find that and give it to you.
I haven't sent nothing from the state from nobody yet, so. I'm just waiting.
Donna, the, we had talked, I think it was last week, week before last, about the cities being billed for, they have been billed for the, or they have not been.
Last time I talked to, I got in contact with the Controller's Office and I was asking her if we were going to pay money before the end of the month. She knew nothing about it. And I am going to go check with the mayor because John Britt told Denise that he had sent the agreement over to be signed. So she called me back, nobody over there had the agreement, so I asked if I would contact Mr. Brooke and have him resend it. Well, I yelled him, asked him to resend it. I never heard anything, but he eventually did call Charlie and Charlie Richmond in our office and told Charlie that he did, he resented the city, but the last time I talked to Jen and the Commissioner's Office, they had not built the city yet and, and because the Commissioners told her to hang on. So that's all we know.
Well, wouldn't that agreement have to be approved at a Commissioners meeting as well? I mean, to be able to bill? This signed agreement?
I was, we're waiting on the city to sign it. Other than that, I mean, I don't think anything else about it.
Donna, you're, you're saying the city has not signed the agreement. They have it in their hands. They just have not signed it, correct?
I don't know that they have it in their hands. I was told that Mr. Brooke resented.
Okay.
Bill? Bill, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Bill, can we have you inquire about the, the status of that with John Britt?
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you.
We know the agreement, the new agreement is a flat two hundred thousand regardless of if we spend two hundred and eighty thousand. We know that we're only going to get two hundred thousand quarterly this year, so.
Right.
She was a little shocked when I asked her when she was going to send the two hundred thousand to, so.
So we're going to be three hundred and twenty thousand short of what we anticipated. Is that correct?
What?
We'll be three hundred and twenty thousand short of what you put in as anticipated for this year.
Thirty-eight I had written.
Well, she said.
Yeah, that's what I had.
Oh, you mean overall for the city reimbursement?
Yeah, for the year.
We're going to get eight hundred thousand total.
But what did you put in for anticipate?
If I may, Donna, Ron, are you, are you refer, are you referring to what she said she might have to borrow the three hundred and forty by the end of April? And is the two hundred thousand figured into that? Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm just asking if we.
Not happening overall for the year. My total anticipation from the city, my total anticipated revenue from the city for the year when we did budgets last year was based on previous year, which was I'm going to say a little over a million dollars, so.
Sounds right.
Don's right. When he's saying we're going to be a little over two hundred thousand dollars short because the agreement now is a flat eight hundred thousand for the year.
Which reduces our operating balance by that amount.
Yes. I didn't bring that with me, so I can't tell you what the anticipated amount was.
That's okay. Just so everybody is aware that, that that's.
So, so Donna, there is a shortfall from the city of Monsey, correct?
That has nothing to do with COVID.
Right.
Did, did you hear what I, did you hear what I said, Donna? There is a shortfall, correct?
Yes, there will be.
I, I couldn't hear you, sorry.
Based on what was anticipated when we did budgets last year, yes, there will be a shortfall.
Okay.
Well, and Bill, Bill, again, I would, I would ask with the Commissioners, the urgency as for completing the agreement with the city so that we're, we're aware of whether an attempt to pay is still there.
Yeah, I will, and I'll, I'll report back to you yet today, Scott.
Okay, Donna, if you can, could you sit down once you get a chance to get down there, what that anticipated number was? Because we'll probably have to change that if the, if we see the agreement.
Yes.
Scott, this is Jane.
Yep.
That, that two hundred thousand shortfall is from the agreement. Am I correct? And then from the, from the eight hundred thousand agreement with the city.
That hasn't been received, and we're, we're going to have Bill check on what the status of it is.
Okay.
The old agreement said they paid half. They've only agreed to pay eight hundred thousand.
Right.
Correct.
For two years, right? It was a two-year agreement?
The agreement was eight hundred thousand for this, this year and.
And next year.
It's a million dollars.
But was it for a two-year agreement? Wasn't it going to be a two-year agreement at eight hundred thousand per year? Was that the initial conversation?
As we left that meeting, that was the, that was the agreement for, for this year and for next year only. There wasn't anything beyond that.
Right, but I know as, as budget time last year, we knew that coming into this year, there was no agreement and that we might have to front the whole million plus, so I mean, we knew there was going to be these discussions, so.
Okay, let's move on. We've got three resolutions considered today. The first one is Resolution twenty zero zero nine, prohibiting the transfer of local income tax relief fund to the County General Fund one thousand.
I'll move for approval of Resolution twenty twenty dash zero zero nine.
I'll second.
A motion from Larry and a second from Jessica. On this from. Want to just explain what this is?
Yeah. Okay, this temporary loan, whatever the figure is on Friday, like, like I just said, right now, I'm thinking it's going to be three hundred thousand. Whatever that figure is on Friday after we get everything posted, I will borrow only the amount we need to keep County General out of the red. Then when I do my May twentieth advance draw, I will pay that money back. I have to pay it back because in June, all that money goes to the state when I do a settlement. So it's just a temporary loan till May twentieth. That still leaves our three-day money out there that we know we have that we can borrow if we have to.
Okay. You're, you're keeping that rainy day.
Right, because it's rainy day, we're trying to keep it.
I got you.
That we have it, this, this money that I found from the lit, I have to pay back. I have to pay it back next month, so we felt that would be a good place to temporarily take it.
Any more questions?
Sounds good.
Okay, we'll call to you, please. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes.
Bledsoe.
Yes.
Doc Vander.
Yes. The Resolution twenty twenty zero one zero. Resolution of Delaware County Council to reduce certain appropriations in the General Fund, and this was budget cuts in the EMS budget that included when we withdrew from the city and ten positions and expenses that were associated with those.
Let me read the bottom line, Scott.
Approve that, the grant. Three thousand one hundred and eighty-four and twenty-three cents.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion for second by Jane.
Yes.
Okay. And discussion on that. Thank you everyone for receiving emails regarding this prior, prior to the resolution and Bill created, did Bill create the resolution? Okay, Bill created the resolution.
I think maybe you should comment to Jason and his staff, if you will. For what the.
I'm sorry, Ron.
I said, I just wondered if you would like to make a comment to the council thanking Jason and his staff for all that they've done to help here.
If, what they, what they have done Jason and his staff, there are a lot of people that are involved in everything that's going on right now. Good part of the whole community has come together to try and deal with this. Hopefully, once in a lifetime event that's, that's going on right now and, and we, I will pass that on to Jason personally.
You know, we've been hit with the lowering of interest rates and the property tax reduction in unison, and now we're getting the same thing again with the EMS debacle with the city and this pandemic. It's just like Groundhog Day again.
And please also remember along with this work of appropriations, when I send this to the state later today, I also have a, have to show a reduction in my revenue, which I, I can't find in here right now, but I sent it in an email. I think it was around a million
Right.
Or a million six, I can't remember. I have to show that reduction in loss of revenue for EMS also.
So there's over another half a million that we lost from the budget from last September. On our, out of our operating balance.
Yes.
So we're up to eight hundred thousand less in our operating balance right now.
The financial report that I sent last night for, which I went ahead and put County General on there, even though we don't have any appropriations requested today, but I wanted to show you that, and I wanted to tell you that those figures do not reflect the reduction for EMS appropriations or the reduction for the loss of revenue. So that bottom line, I think on your financial is five million, eight hundred and twenty thousand, that will be reduced by a million six revenue and by the reduction of the appropriations, which will in the end be the difference of the two.
Any more questions on twenty twenty dash ten?
Oh.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes.
Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander. Yes. Okay, the third resolution, twenty twenty dash zero one one regarding twenty twenty board budget shortfall due to pandemic. You guys all received a copy of that. And I appreciate all the, all the time from each of you and the input that, that we've received and and Bill has drawn up this resolution to consider today, and I need a motion to approve.
I'll move. Oh, go ahead.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Who was the motion? Ryan?
Ryan.
Yes.
A question for Ryan, second from Jessica. Discussion.
Scott, I, I talked to Scott yesterday about the they were, the County Council were reducing for all part-time employees except for essential maintenance and cleaning personnel. The, the one addition I was wondering about was the mailroom person and how that's under the Commissioners' budget. Should we open that up for a discussion of whether we need, I mean, I'd hate to disrupt the mail flow in the county building with the what's going on, and from my understanding that the postal service will not deliver within the county building. So the mailroom clerk is also going to the post office in the morning, about ten thirty to eleven, collecting the mail and then bringing it back to the county building and distributing it, and then the mail going out with the postage machine. This person also signs the postage, so I didn't know if we want to have a discussion on that and that because I don't want to disrupt the, the mail service.
Yeah, I did, after I talked to you yesterday, I think it was, we talked on the phone, I did talk to Rick Spangler and, and he kind of confirmed that that was a, felt that that was a necessary position, so it's, it's up to the council, I guess, if you want to make an amendment to that.
Well, I'd like, I'd like, I don't know if make a motion within this motion to make amendment to add the mailroom clerk within the item. The allowing, it would be actually item two, sir. It would be, you would just be adding the, the mailroom clerk and, and, and paragraph, or, yeah, number two.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, I've got a motion from Larry to amend that to include the mailroom clerk in a second from. Was that Ryan?
It's Ron.
Ron.
Yes.
Ron, second to that, okay, in a second for Ron.
I'd like to make a comment on that. The, the county building's getting ready to open back up. And we have, the part-time people should have been laid off at the beginning of when this started. So we pay them to not work. And now time for us to open this building back up, and a lot of the part-time employees are essential to these offices because you've lost so many full-time people over the last three or four years due to budget cuts and employee cuts, and doing it backwards, and I know the county treasurer sent you an email yesterday that we would like to wait on that part till May's meeting, let us ride upon a different route. Because just like they've got, they're two part-time that were figuring ready to start collecting taxes at the door. So we've got a few things to go, so it's hard to just wipe out the whole part-time staff because some of them are really essential in offices and some aren't. And so I'd really, I'd like to see that held off for, till the May's meeting. And especially since we're all getting ready to, I mean, my part-time staff, I've had them work. They, they haven't sat at home and, and been paying. They've been, they've been in the office working and just like all the rest of us have, and so I'd really like to hold off on that because they've worked all through this and now sort of throw them out the door when, when they've been at work. So I'd really like for you to consider just maybe changing that and taking that out. I have no problem with, you know, right now you're not on full position or whatever, because a lot of counties are doing that. I think the state's doing that also, but I'd really like for you to reconsider that and let the treasurer and I sit down and try to figure out a something different here. We can address it in May. It would still shortfall, and we have no other choice than we can address it in, in May.
I'd like to comment on that. I'd like to comment on that because I received information of that part-time employees were being paid during this last two pay periods without coming to work. And that really bothered me. Uh, item three kind of covers what you're asking us to do and what we're asking the, the department has elected officials to do is just pay the people that are working for the hours they work. But I, I think it was not a good practice to pay part-time people when they weren't, uh, reporting for work. And that's what has brought this about.
I, I agree with that. I just don't want to see all the part-time people. Like I said, our, our office has still worked with part-time people. Our whole staff has worked. And so I know the treasurer's whole staff has worked and, and so we just, I just want to make sure that when this building opens back up to the public, it's going to be extremely because people are going to have to make up for six or seven weeks of lost time of not being able to transfer pensions or come to the building for things. And so I'm just asking that, you know, if you, you want to reduce for hours to fifteen hours a week or something like that, I have no problem with that. But let's make sure we part-time.
What if, what if we amended two again and state that, that it would only, section two would only be in place until the commissioners, you know, rescind their resolutions and open up the county building to the public. And that would allow that to happen. And I want to echo Ron's, Ron's comments. We can't be paying part-time people to stay at home like we would our full-time. So I, I don't know if anybody would be interested in that or not. Because if, if they do not, if they don't open up the building May first, then we're, we're going to be right back to where, where we are right now.
Well, I think that's where bullet point number four comes in, where it states this resolution shall take effect upon passage and remain in effect until amended or repealed by the council. So it's not the end-all be-all. We can go in and make amendments when we need to.
Right. Well, I, well, I know that we'd have to have a meeting and post for a meeting and there's a couple of days pay. But if you went ahead, what Steve, what I think what Steve's saying, when the building opens back up and every, the, the full-time employees are all back in as well as the part-time, we're just basically stating here that the part-time employees, if this were to continue where they wouldn't, a part-time employee wouldn't be getting paid to sit at home.
Right.
Well, that number three kind of covers that. Larry was, and just take two out.
Well, yeah, well, it does really. If, if we took two out, that would just about take everything out as long as, uh, yeah, I mean, that would do it if we just took two out completely.
Now, if we, uh, if we did that on, on Steve's point of reducing those hours for part-time, because I don't think this building is going to be operating at, at full capacity in the next several weeks. It is my, is my guess. I mean, I'm hopeful that, that that we're going to start to get people back to work and there are some obligations that, that I think are going to have to be met in this building for public access before the end of next month.
Well, what if we would take two out and change the hours? Steve recommended fifteen, but I would say twenty hours in number three.
You could always take number two and, and change that to part-time has to work to be paid.
Well, that's what we want.
You do not pay.
That's it.
Right. That's what three says.
That's what three says.
Three says actually work hours. So if you take two completely out, three covers what they're saying that, that it's because it states actually work. And change those hours from twenty-nine to twenty is Ron.
And that would do it. And that would take out two and that would do everything.
And right now we're discussing Larry's amendment. Did we vote on Larry's amendment?
I don't think so.
No, but I could change that. Just, I could withdraw my motion and make a motion that we just extract number two. And then we'd do another motion on number three when we get that one voted in. So I'll withdraw my motion for the amendment for number two, adding the mailroom clerk.
Okay, will you withdraw your second?
Yes.
Ron, okay. I want you could do Larry, I think, and Bill helped me on, on this if, if not, but you could make your amendment to this resolution to include both of those changes.
I will. So my motion would be to omit to do without my mailroom clerk what I just motioned and amend my motion to withdraw two entirely. And then par, and, and sentence number three, that we would change the hours worked should not exceed twenty hours per week instead of twenty-nine.
I'll second that.
Okay, I've got an amendment from Larry and a second from Jessica.
I'll second.
We've got it.
You're too late.
Oh darn.
Come on, Jane. You get the next one, Jane.
You gotta be quicker.
Too far away.
At least me and Ryan aren't arguing about motions this time.
That's true.
Give us time.
Oh, it's coming.
Oh gosh.
Bill, are you there?
Yes.
Okay. Did you, uh, did you catch all of that?
I did. And I can, and I can, if, if it's adopted, then I can revise the resolution and get it to Denise for signature.
Okay. Do you, um, I guess in your legal opinion, do you think that that, uh, number three takes care of, of that part-time employees aren't going to get paid unless they actually work those hours?
Yes.
Okay.
We need to ask the commissioners to amend their resolution when they meet again Friday with this thing. Letting them know that you actually have reduced hours. If they don't work, they won't be paid.
Can, can we communicate that to the commissioners and make that request, Bill?
Yes, I can do that. No problem.
Discussion. Yes. Got a question for both of you.
Okay. I, um, if you pass this today, this is effective today, right? As a demand, nobody can work more than twenty hours a week.
Yes. Bill, is that your interpretation?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Forty hours in a pay period, correct?
Yeah. At, at most. Okay. Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quake and Bush.
Yes.
Ballard.
Did he say Ballard?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yeah.
Ms. Lassner.
Yes.
Yes. Hey, we are on to you.
That was, that was on the amendment, Scott.
Yeah.
Sorry, on the amendment. Sorry. Thank you, Bill. Thanks for the catch. Okay, now on the, uh, on the resolution as amended. I need a roll call, please. We have a motion in a second. Um, Larry and Jessica. Yep.
Motion. The motion needs to be as amended.
Do what?
The motion.
Yeah, he's right. Um, oh, oh, we, oh, amend my motion to approve resolution twenty dash twenty dash. Well, no, I didn't make that resolution to approve that one. That was Jessica and, uh, I just made the.
Ryan made the motion.
You, you have a motion.
So Ryan, you'll have to amend.
You have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, we have.
Already. Yeah, you don't need a new motion.
But we voted for the amendment.
Yeah, you approved the amendment. Now you're back on the motion as amended.
Yeah, now we're approving the motion as amended. Or the resolution as amended, excuse me.
Yeah.
Get a roll call, please. And Quake and Bush.
Yes.
Ballard. Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassner.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander. Yes. Right. Do you have anything else that you need to?
I don't think so.
Or the, uh, well, I think we were getting in the habit to do it.
We were, so I want to make sure we're still going with that. Okay, uh, county commissioners edit. Three hundred, edit it. Three million dollars total request, three million dollars.
Need a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Second. One's here.
Well, I don't know. There's a delay, I guess. I don't.
I'll second it.
From Jessica on the commissioner's edit for three million. Need a second.
I'll second it.
Ron's.
Thanks, Ron.
Any discussion on that?
Mr. Pres, Mr. President, can you kind of explain what that is? It's an awful large sum. Can you kind of talk about where that's going? What's, what's happening there?
Yeah, let me, um, let me tell you too, the way that we, um, I didn't get a finance meeting this time around was, um, I, I had talked to Mary. Um, we actually did not have a finance committee meeting, but Ron and I went over these transfers and questions, um, of the auditors department and Donna answered all those. And Sean, I'm going to let her answer this one for you too. And, and Mary, um, Mary, we were trying to get Mary to participate in the three-way call. We just, we decided that she'd let us just go ahead and, and take a look at these and and make the recommendation. So that's where we're, where we're at. Donna, go ahead and talk about that.
Edit usually only do once or twice a year, basically. This is, um, we did an appropriation. I think three months of the year or so, uh, I had, um, part of the appropriation left in encumber. That appropriation is now down to three or to six hundred thousand. This three million will get us through the rest of the year. Right now, it left in the appropriation is, um, I believe six hundred and thirty thousand. I have bond payments next month, which are, which will completely take up the rest of the current appropriation. So this three million will get us through, it should get us through to the end of the year.
So Donna, these are, the, real quick, these are current obligations that we have. I mean, this is stuff that, that has to be paid. Um, and this is a, a normal, three million dollars. I mean, you know, that catches my eye a little bit, so.
Sounds like a lot of money. We do it all at one time.
Okay.
Uh, also on that, Ryan, real quick, I mean, it, it's all right, all these are, like I say, the obligations in their edit plan. Nothing changes in the edit plan. We just appropriate the money for them to pay what's in the edit plan.
Right, that's just like pay the bills.
Right.
I, I'd like to make a comment here. Uh, back, Larry, you might have been commissioner at the time. I don't remember who was, but uh, it used to be that the commissioners would come in the first of the year and they had a edit advisory board and the, the head of the board would come in and ask for the whole edit budget at the first of the year, the, the whole amount, whatever it was going to be. And the council decided that they'd rather see this increments to kind of keep an eye on it, I guess, for lack of a better way to say it. And, uh, little transparency, for lack of a better word.
When we changed that, Ron, and, and inserted on the edit board at the time, the, uh, a, and it is a good thing. You, you got to remember too, when we look at the lit, overall lit projection is going to be decreased, AKA edit as well. The, uh, the, the, most of the, the bond obligations that you see in the edit plan are, are based on, you know, obviously general obligation bonds, uh, that, that we, that the commissioners do their bridges, for example. So when we see these decreases coming, and they are coming, the, those obligations were, we borrowed money as a county to do a certain bridge or a project that's listed in a three-year plan. Now, keep in mind, when these reductions come, those obligations for those bridges are still in place. That doesn't, that's something they just can't get rid of. Those are obligations. The, the, a lot of the work is now just being let out on a bridge like Smithville Bridge should be let out this year. And that was put in place back in twenty fourteen bonds. So when, when those, that revenues decrease, keep in mind, the money that's, that you see in the bank balance are, is actually obligated for those type of projects. So again, with the, the new jail and the, the current obligations we have, those decreases in edit that we, we even seen what the, Donna, five hundred thousand less this year than the previous year. Just a natural decline, what are, what's happening in Delaware County as far as our workforce or wages. Uh, expect that to be more substantial in the next several years. Uh, so just keep in mind, Ryan, when you look at those projects, those are all just obligations that, that have to be, be done. You just can't simply say, well, we need an extra five hundred thousand to help the county general fund. They can't do that anymore. That bridge will still have to be done. Because that, that money was borrowed on the pretense and approved by the council to, to do these projects. If that makes a little simplified, I don't know.
No, you're good. I, I, my thing was three million dollars, you know, a large sum. Uh, we haven't, I've not necessarily appropriated anything like that, um, you know, or, or gone through the financial agenda with anything that high yet. So I just wanted to ask a question and just have it clarified as to where that's going and what it is.
Right. And if, but Ryan, if you look at the financial that I sent last night, under edit, you'll see that, um, the line eleven shows the encumbered appropriation, which was the million eight that was left over from last year. Look on line ten, you'll show no, uh, appropriation for the year and the remaining surplus funds in that budget is five million and we're, we are requesting three million of that five be appropriated.
All right, I see it.
Right.
Thank you.
It was a long time we approved an amount for like this.
For edit?
Yeah.
The big amount?
No, we're edit.
I have to go back and look. I'm not sure. Like this month of the year last year.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'm not sure what month or what dollar amount it was at that time.
Any other questions?
But, so you have a five million, eight twenty-two thirteen. No, that's wrong. County General. Five million, five twenty-one seventy-seven.
Yes.
Surplus in edit.
Right.
Okay. That's their operating balance.
Right.
I couldn't find it. It was back in the computer hopper. I branded it and didn't go pick it up.
My, my current bond obligations for the year is around a million three total. Half of it's paid this May. And, uh, then the second half will be paid in April.
Okay, and Donna, real quick for the record, uh, the, uh, the bond obligation, don't we have a bond falling off next year? So that'll help with some of the decrease? The anticipated decreases.
Say that again, Larry.
Yes, if there was a bond falling off next year, it'll help with the decrease.
Yes.
Right, so that'll help. That should.
Next year, yes, it'll go down. Uh, the one bond, uh, this is the last year for the bond payment.
Right, so just keep in mind, that'll help some soften some of the decrease, but not a lot.
It may be paid off in May now that you said that. I, that may be making the last payment in May on the phone. So come.
That'd be fabulous.
It'd be good for the commissioner.
Well, they're gonna need it.
Yeah. Coming from a former commissioner, I like that.
Mr. Ballard.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, dot user fee, four forty-one, office machines, three thousand eight hundred, total request, three thousand eight hundred.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Second by Jane. Any discussion on that?
Well, all business teams, I guess, I don't...
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Uncle Grant. One oh one, child and homeschool visitor, thirteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixteen cents. One oh two, child and homeschool visitor, thirteen thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and five cents. One oh three, child and homeschool visitor, uh, thirty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-six. One oh four, family recovery court case manager, ten thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents. One seventy-one FICA, five thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and four cents. Total request, seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and eight cents.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second by Ryan. Any discussion?
I do. Uh, and I don't know whether anybody's gonna be able to answer this, but is item one oh four an increase in someone's salary?
I think part of that salary is paid out of that grant. Yeah, right.
It's out of the grant.
According to Steve, part of that, uh, is paid out of that grant.
Okay. Fair enough.
Roll call. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Uh, that's like, Sun Vader's Cornerstone perpetuation, three eleven, professional services, thirty thousand, total request, thirty thousand.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Larry, second from Jessica. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Kind of close.
Okay.
What are you kind of voting, uh? There you go. We're prepared for anything up here.
Okay.
Um, oh. Instead of that same health department, it should say Health Environmental Enforcement Fund. Three eleven, recording fees, four thousand, three eighteen enforcement, two thousand five hundred, three ninety-three education, total request, seven thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and seven cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Look at us go.
Is that Ryan or Perry?
I think Ryan had that one.
Hey, Ryan.
That's fine.
Right, any discussion on that? Roll call, please. Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes.
Community crossings grant, just highway, three ten contractual services, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and ten cents. Total request, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and ten cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by...
Ron.
Ron, okay. Any discussion?
Is this a match? Is this our match? Fifty-fifty match?
Hold on.
Do we know? You know that, Donna?
Yeah, this money come from the state.
Yeah, that's, uh...
Oh, this is our, their half.
Yeah. This is state money. We got it in March. That exact amount.
Roll call. Mr. Quicken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ready for the transfer agenda? A, uh, commissioners, A one thirty-seven, V A assistant, plus twenty-three thousand, oh eighty-three, eighty-six. B one thirty-seven, isn't that backwards? B one, huh? That's backwards, I think. It should say, A one thirty-seven minus twenty-three thousand, oh eighty-three, eighty-six, plus B one thirty-seven, twenty-three thousand, oh eighty-three, eighty-six, total request zero.
Right of motion.
Move to approve.
Ryan.
Second.
Second from Jessica. Discussion? And that just all within the law of the just pass. Yeah, this falls definitely, um, plus I also, I talked to the commissioners on this one and, and my expectation was us not to, um, go with, I did not go back to the commissioners and ask them to withdraw because of the, uh, the load that they're in right now, dealing with everything. So, we would, since we have a motion and a second, we would need to vote, vote this down.
Because this, right, this does fall under the part-time then, right, is what?
The person in that position that's currently working it is part-time.
Gotcha.
Yeah. This would, this was a full-time position.
It'd create a new position, correct?
This was to create a new full-time position, but the resolution, resolution you just passed does away with it, so you need to vote this down.
Right, exactly.
I understand.
I'm good.
Mr. Ballard.
No.
Mr. Bledsoe.
No.
Ms. Chambers.
No.
Ms. Lassiter.
No.
Ms. Piper.
No.
Mr. Quicken Bush.
No.
Ms. Alexander.
No.
I did talk to, uh, Paul on the next one, and he has, um, agreed to withdraw that.
The whole thing?
Yeah, the whole thing. So, um... Please let me move on. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, drainage board, one oh one board member, minus fifteen hundred, one oh one A, board member, plus fifteen hundred, total request zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
The motion from Larry, second from Jessica. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please. Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Should they not have voted it down because the resolution just said you can't do them?
That's, well, in my opinion, I mean, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a, a board member, it's, we talked about employees, these are actually board members appointed by state statute that, that we have to have. You've got to have a functioning board.
I will, I would agree with that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, um, health department co-op agreement. This is a grant. Part-time, one ninety-eight, minus fifteen thousand, FICA, one seventy-one, minus one thousand, one forty-seven fifty. Three ten contractual services, plus sixteen thousand, one forty-seven fifty, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Larry.
Yes. Did we, did we decide on that?
Was that right? Yeah, on the second? Yes, okay, that's who we're going with.
Okay.
Any discussion?
We're doing better on that.
Roll call, please.
Wait a minute. Uh, did you, did you talk to Jamie about what this is, why they're doing it that way?
Yeah, this was, um, actually, I did, uh, on both of these issues. And thank him for what he was doing as well on behalf of the council. He, I believe this is the one that comes out of an, an old tobacco grant that they had in there. He's been trying to get this, um, switched over and, and with, uh, things coming up the way they did. He did get it on there, and, and this, was this on March agenda?
Uh, it could have been. The money's been set for the fund, and that's the balance of the fund to be spent, and once that's spent, it's gone.
That, uh, is, like you said, an old grant. And that's been kind of rolled around for years. They brought it in-house because when they did it contractually, the people doing it were kind of wasting the money to be, just to sum it up, so I, I'm just kind of curious as why Jamie went back to contractual when they brought it out of contractual because it wasn't being used properly. That's, that's my only question.
Ryan, I can, I can tell you, if you call Jamie, he can explain it to you in detail.
Oh, gee.
He did that with both of it, and, and honestly, I can't even recall all of what he talked about, but, but, so...
Okay. Fair enough.
Hey, roll call, please. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush.
No.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, the next one, community corrections has been withdrawn.
I guess, I think, uh, Donna, I think we want to go back to, um, the, uh, commission's request and go ahead and either not get a second, if the dice are back in the second, or go ahead and get the motion in the second, and we'll, vote that down because Paul's not here, um, to ask about it. I talked to him, but I would rather us go through, uh, the process on that one. So, if I can get a motion on the communications, line items.
Improve request for communications, one thousand, eight, one twenty-four, as presented.
Got a motion from Ron. Please, for a second.
Second.
Second from Larry.
Right.
Okay, this one would also be in violation of our resolution that was passed. Any discussion? Actually, this one wouldn't because it's, this one wouldn't, but, but, um...
This would not be, th- this is public safety, this would be, uh, not in violation, we're just withdrawing it.
Yeah, Paul, Paul agreed.
We, we excluded public safety.
Yeah, you're right, Larry, thanks for clearing that up. Um, Paul did, uh, indicate to me that he would hold off on this. For now.
Right, I, I think we got a couple, couple in public safety that aren't hiring due to the, the situation that's going on and just trying to see, you know, only as needed, that's why we, we, uh, added the public safety, and that being jailers, sheriff's deputies, communications techs, and jailers, so...
Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quicken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on, we're supposed to be voting no.
Yes, you should have voted no.
Yep.
Take mine back, no.
Yeah, he's right.
Bill, what can we do here?
Roll call, Steve.
Can we do a roll call?
If your roll call is open, anyone can change their vote.
Okay.
Change mine to no.
I'll change mine to no as well.
Plan Ballard, also, please, we'll change it to no.
Let's all know.
Change mine to no.
Everybody? Everybody said no? Okay, thank you. Sorry, it may have been a little more confusing, I guess, but maybe we needed to, but ones that you're, then, uh...
Okay, now I need the motion to amend the salary order.
Hold on, I got an email, uh...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I got an email from Steve, from Donna, about additional, uh, left...
Have an additional transfer, uh, you should have reached the email. Prosecutor pre-trial, the group's time, two twelve, covered, one, supply, plus five thousand. Three twenty-five, there, that, we, we, minus five thousand. Total request, zero.
What is this?
What is it? Yeah, I was gonna say.
I can tell you.
They're gonna file for FEMA, uh, reimbursement on this one also.
Okay, so that's...
I got a call from, um, prosecutor, Gary Hoffman, yesterday. They were, uh, searching around to find, uh, masks for the court system. There, uh, nobody can find it in their budget to pay for those except for the prosecutor, and they will file, uh, for a FEMA reimbursement. Jason asked him to go this direction versus going through him. They're maybe more likely to, to receive that reimbursement, but there is no guarantee. Uh, there is a requirement, I think, of the, the courts and the commissioners that they have masks available over there, and I believe this was ten thousand.
Yes, they were fifty, seventy.
Ten thousand.
And Emily, um, Emily's driving to Goshen to pick these up as soon as you approve this. Can't have checks in hand because it's payment upon delivery, they won't let her have them without payment, so if you approve this today, she's driving to Goshen to pick them up.
Okay.
That's, um, ten thousand masks, based on my price that I buy for, by the box.
It is ten thousand masks.
And there's no, there's no guarantee of reimbursement? And if we do get reimbursed, what's, is FEMA, is it a hundred percent? Is it fifty? I mean...
I can't answer that, I just know they're gonna file for reimbursement.
There's, there's no guarantee on any of the, um, that's being spent on, on D P E. I think the commissioners and the court boards are required that there be, be available to the employees and maybe the public, I'm not sure what the, over there. Be able to use attorneys, that kind of, there's a, there's a lot of things that are, I usually...
Can you have whoever's talking speak up? I can't hear.
That, that was a county auditor, I had talked with Mr. Hoffman yesterday, and all of the attorneys and everyone that comes into the courtroom are gonna be required to wear a mask. I don't know the policy. State court policy, what they're setting, but, um, they couldn't find a place to pay for them, and the pre-trial diversion is an area that the prosecutors said, that he would like to help the courts out and, and pay for that.
Okay.
So, we, we did receive, um, you remember what the check was? Didn't we see, received some reimbursement already through Jason and the rules of the operation?
I don't know if you want to call it a reimbursement, it...
Mr. President?
Yeah.
This is Jason Rogers, I, I can speak to that if you'd like me to.
Right.
I think...
Go ahead, Mr. Bledsoe, if you have something.
I, I don't have any questions, though, I think it's a good, good thing, with, I mean, if we can get the masks, that's... I, I don't have any questions, I think it's a good, good thing, I mean, if we can get the masks, let's get the masks, I mean.
Sure, so let me, let me fill you in on, on this. First of all, I have been working with the courts and we are trying to source these, these are not N95s, these are procedure masks. We're trying to get them for under a dollar, so that's been the challenge. Two things are going on, one is we are applying for public assistance. I have been working with Emily on getting the courts and judicial systems public assistance application put together. That is hopefully what we are going to see, the money come back, when you say the FEMA money, that's what we're talking about. The good news on that front is we had a extension to the thirtieth to get those amounts turned into public assistance, however, they have taken that deadline off. I received that information just yesterday, so as we incur costs like this, that those individual items from every single department in the county, cities and towns and everyone now does not have a deadline to get those in. We were putting in last week all of the anticipated, or at least the, the available anticipated funds that we were going to apply for public assistance from FEMA to get monies back, this is what I, what I would say to that, under normal circumstances, you have a regional disaster, you can plan on a seventy-five, twenty-five return. You have to have in-kind or cash value money in the game, twenty-five percent before FEMA would give you seventy-five percent back of what is eligible. That's not all monies, but that is what is eligible. Currently, they are calling for section B, category B preventative measures, which is PPE, things that we are trying to do to stop the spread and all those types of things. So this would, this will apply to that application for one. Two is, I am in the process, we just found a grant for Department of Justice COVID response for fifty-eight thousand dollars and I am in the process of finding out who needs to apply for that. And I've already put our name in the hat for it, but they, they've approved that, or they have said, DOJ has said, we, we can get this money for Delaware County, it's a sum of fifty-eight thousand. There was medical, I'm sorry, yeah, uh, medical response money in, that was, I, I'm calling it stimulus money is, is sort of what it is, but it's, it's medical response that we received through Medicaid from EMS, that is for EMS. That's a hundred and eight thousand dollars for personal protective equipment, maintaining virus control and those types of things to make sure that we're keeping our workforce healthy in, in the medical sector. So that money is specifically, and Donna and I have a ten-page document on what the parameters of that spending is. The DOJ money is what I'm hoping will work for the courts. I do know after speaking with the prosecutor and the administrators that the witnesses, the juries and all those people have to be provided PPE. This particular money I know is not only gloves, but also hand sanitizer and, and the masks. So that is kind of where we're at overall. I do, I will say this, this is not a typical regional disaster and we need to be very conscientious of the fact that FEMA is gonna pay the bill for the entire country and we need to realize that. I think we'll be, I think an optimistic look is a fifty-fifty return if, if that. So that's just me being a pessimist, but certainly those, those bills are going to be quite expensive when they come out regionally. And that's what I have for you today.
Thank you, Jason.
Any other discussion?
No, sir.
Roll call, Stephen.
I believe we do.
You make the motion?
Possibly, but I'll move to approve again.
All second.
Okay, got a motion for Jessica, second from Larry. Any other discussion on this one? I probably went right into discussion, I asked you, Brad. I don't think so, anyway. Roll call please. Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander, yes. Now we need the motion.
Yeah.
I can make the motion, a motion to approve transfers and financial agenda and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions.
Second.
Ryan.
Got a second from Ryan on that, motion from Jessica, a second from Ryan. Session on that. Piper.
Yes.
Quankambe.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Lassiter.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I need to ask you, and I'll have to ask, we'll have to ask for a response individually, but, so I'll ask Steve to do a roll call, but I need to ask you if it's okay to have Bill work with the auditor's office and, and get e-signatures on this so that you guys don't have to come in to the building and sign individually. So I'm gonna ask for your approval to e-signature on all the documents that we've approved today. Do you, roll call on that for me, Steve? Mr. Quankambe.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Alexander, yes. Okay, hey, I want, I want you guys a chance to, to say something, but I want to thank all of you for, we have talked a lot by phone individually. And then Ryan and I actually went through the county building last week and just kind of checked everything out as far as the offices and, and different rooms and it looks like there's pretty good spacing in this building, there already was in most offices. So as far as seeing back as the employees go, everything looks pretty good. I know the commissioners, we have supported the commissioners throughout this whole process. I'm here, but I definitely want to keep, we'll let you continue to keep doing and you all know it's not gonna stop here, so it will continue. But anyway, I want to give you guys an opportunity to say something here towards the end of the meeting and you guys can kind of just go, whoever goes first, goes first.
I'll go, I'll go ahead and start, I've got a few things, a few things I'm gonna touch on here. We recently found out this sixth district court was coming down the pipe. An email from John Brooks. I'm, I'm, I'm very much, I, I would say irritated with the way this process worked. One, because I feel like there's a little bit of a disregard for the taxpayer here and I feel that there's complete disregard for any type of budgetary concerns. You know, I think it was, was it the prosecutor and judges that came up and talked to us about this? And we, we told them then, at least I did, I had conversations with plenty of people about this, that, that the money wasn't there. Where do we, where do we find it? Where's the money come from the build-out? You know, we were, I would say, very much upfront as to, you know, hey, and that, and that with existing shortfalls. We knew we were gonna have shortfalls with the city of Monsey when it comes to the nine-one-one communications, EMS. We were gonna have shortfalls with COVID-19 now, I think those are long-term. You know, and, and I'm, I'm just very frustrated with it. I talked to Senator Gaskell about this time and time, actually a few different times, we've had some spirited conversation about this and I explained to him, one, I feel what was that, right in the middle of my soliloquy there? Um, I, I, I kind of feel like right now, when I talked to Senator Gaskell, I told him, I said, you know, the state constantly has their back pocket when it comes to the, the budget. I mean, they hamstring us on the budget constantly, on what, what we, salaries, all kinds of different things. That's a problem for us and now we've got this sixth district court that has come down, that has been legislated into law, legislated into law. Now we have to figure out how to fund it. Originally, we were working together on this. I, I guess, I, I feel misled. You know, I've got questions as to the process. Like I said, it sounds like people went down there and lobbied for this after it was brought up, that we didn't have money then. Now, we've got a pandemic on our hands with, with reductions probably across the board. Donna, what we're gonna be running into there. You know, I guess my question is, is who loses here? Because it's not like we're printing money. We've got, we've got so many shortfalls coming up, my question is, is who loses? I, I'd like, I'd like them to tell me that because it, it, we've only got so much money we can spend. You know, talking to some of the people within my district about this, you know, I mean, taxes, what do we do? They, they are, they have no want, need at all to have their taxes raised. You know, and I, I'm not, I'm not for that whatsoever. I guess my, my thought is, is I'm, I'm not happy about this at all. I feel like for some reason, we just decided to do, but we didn't worry about how we, how we get there. And that's my problem, I think we are in a, some dire times right now with this pandemic and it's, it's irritated, I, I feel, I feel very, very misled right now. So that's, that's where I wanted to go with it. I'm just, I'm frustrated, very frustrated with it.
I, on Ryan, I, I understand where you're coming from, Ryan, as far as like say, we, we knew that we're anticipating revenue losses with EMS and nine-one-one and now we got to deal with this. I do know that they'd asked about the build-outs, the sixth court with an email. My understanding, the, the build operate transfer agreement is already got its project in there, there's no change orders, so that being said, I would think that the, the build-out would have to come after this project and then have to go back out for an RFP to see what that would possibly be and then they'd have to find the commissioners, I would assume, and have some sort of financing mechanism at that point. I don't think it could be included, build operate transfer agreement, that'd be something I guess that Bill could check in to, but yeah, the cost, you know, we knew the cost, I mean, the overall idea was a great idea, but we were all concerned about the cost, knowing what we, we had coming forth this year and now with increases in all revenues and it's gonna be a train.
Anybody else on the, on the sixth court topic?
I would just reiterate my comments, been there and done that, and that's exactly what happened back in the eighties when I was a commissioner. We didn't agree with it, but they went around us, went to the state legislature, created Court Five, which was a county court at the time, meant to be able to take care of small claims, et cetera. City court was closed, by the time I took a little sabbatical and came back on the council, city court was back open and Court Five belonged to the county court, it was a circuit court. And I didn't know how else to warn my fellow council members, but I'm sure you're all frustrated in the same way. But this is politics, no matter how you look at it, it's not Republican nor Democrat, it's just plain old politics, that's bottom line.
Well, reiterate what's gotten in Austin, Austin shut up here. We have, the last few weeks, we've all been on the phones for hours a week and I think we continue to communicate and, and really communicate more tomorrow than we ever did today and, and make sure that when we do things in the future that we're communicating with the employees and everybody to kind of we can find out that when these revenues, we get the correct information. I'd like to make sure we're all seeing the same information. I know there's a lot of sharing going on from different, and that works out fine, but I want to make sure, you know, we continue to, to work towards a more communication for these next several months is gonna be the key, I think, as far as, you know, getting everybody on the same page and, and maybe making, possibly going to make difficult decisions. So, if anybody's done, first response, it's working, you know, thanks to everybody.
I, I would just, I, I guess, just remind people that, don't, you know, try not to disregard the fiscal body. I mean, that, that's the way it feels to me and, and maybe it's, I don't know, I don't know. I, like I said, I feel misled, feel like we were disregarded completely and now we've got to figure out how to pay for something that we didn't have money for before. So that, that's where I'm at and that's why I'm sideways.
Ryan, Ryan.
Yeah.
Do you, you remember when the judges came and talked to us? And they were going to Indianapolis at that time to present their case? I guess I was one that, that, that didn't totally oppose it because when they, when they closed down, the city courts were gonna be, be hit with it anyway. And you know how long it gets, how long it takes to get something through court now. But anyway, the judges did come and talk to us and tell us that they were going to a meeting and remember they wanted that letter of support, of support from us?
Yeah, but I, I recall us drafting a letter. Scott, or Mr. President, if you could, I mean, we did, if I recall, draft a letter stating to them if, if, that, that we could not, we just didn't have the funding for this.
Yeah, Ryan, we, my, my recollection is that we voted on a resolution and at that time, they told us if we pass that resolution, that it wouldn't be, they wouldn't be able to get the approval of the state in that. What I would ask, I think the immediate question now is from, from Don was that should we go ahead and do that build-out now in the Justice Center? And I think they are, or at least John in his email seemed to be favorable about doing that now. I, I would ask if it's, if it's okay with the council that they'll send over a copy of the resolution. And I don't think things have changed as far as the finances go, except for the downside is, is there's no way that we can afford, if we couldn't afford it then, there's no way we can afford to build that out now. Would you be able to do that, Bill, if it's okay with council?
Yes, no problem.
Okay, is it, anybody opposed to that?
No, I'm just saying that Bill should, in his letter, remind them that we were somewhat adamant, although we weren't unanimous, that we didn't support it. Those of us that were opposed to it were adamant and I, I'd like to say something here. I am just so proud of the people that I'm working with on the council and Scott has done a really great job under some pretty difficult circumstances and I'm gonna be very candid, when this pandemic came about, I told my wife, I said, you know, I'm so glad that Scott wanted to be president because I'm not so sure at my age, I could handle all of this and Scott has been a good student. When he called me and said that Ryan and Jessica and Larry were calling him, I decided to get back in the foray and I've made my calls and Scott's called me and this, this award you guys gave me last year, I, I was overwhelmed by it. But I think what makes me as proud of any is that I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of people and on the council and Larry, I worked with you on the commissioners and when you came on council, I was a little reluctant to accept you, be honest about it. But I really enjoy the way you've come into the council and looked at it from the point of view of the council. Ryan, you just said it, my, my main goal as a council member has been to gain respect for the county council. And the county council is kind of the key to this whole government, local government concept. concept. We don't just look after the people in the county building, we look after the taxpayers' dollar. I look at myself and you guys as members of a corporation board and we're working for the stockholders. I've always had that in my mind that way. And I'm just proud to be on a board with the seven of you. And I thank you for all your input for the last three or four weeks. Uh, it's just been wonderful, uh, even though it's such a, a drastic and hard to understand from any of us's comprehension. Thanks again, anyone. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I'd like to kind of piggyback on, oh, go ahead, Larry.
I would have never think, thought in a million years we'd ever Zoom or FaceTime with Ron Quaffenbush.
Well, I think I'd like to kind of piggyback on what Ron was saying. You know, these have been different times for all of us and we've all been on the phone a bunch. I mean, I, there are days where I'll talk to multiple members of the council three, four times in a day, just trying to make sure we're all helping each other out. And I know, like, some of us have been helping the commissioners as much as we can. We try to stay in communication with them. I know Ryan's gone into the EOC to do some help. Um, you know, I've done one of their videos for, um, them. I know Scott has been actively working with them. So I just appreciate everything the commissioners have been doing through this time. Um, and then the rest of the council, all of us working together under, uh, somewhat challenging times. And by the way, it's great to see all of your faces. Like I've missed all of you. So I'm glad everyone got on here, but also want to thank Jason, his team, um, everyone over at the EOC, 911 Communications, Danny Bain and his team, Kyle at GIS. We've had a lot of folks who have been really, really busy working their tails off to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to stay protected and safe and, um, be on top of where our financial standings are and making sure we're all kind of on the same path. And, uh, if you haven't checked out the, uh, coronavirus dashboard, I mean, Kyle's done a great job of keeping that updated and adding new metrics to it when things come out. So, um, I'm really proud of us. And I know some folks may say like, well, we don't see a lot of this and we don't see a lot what's going on, but I can assure you, we've been really putting in a lot of extra time. Our evenings are on the phones with folks. I mean, we're taking calls throughout the day, whether it's our constituents or other county council members, commissioners, whoever, um, we're all just trying to do our part to make sure we get through this together and stay in a good financial position. I know going into 2020, we were really proud of how hard we had worked to get to a point where we didn't have to borrow. And that's our intention is to continue to do that. But to Ryan's point, we have the Sixth Circuit Court coming into play, which, correct me if I'm wrong, that election would be in 2022 with that court opening in 2023. The commissioners, uh, we're going to be giving them probably, I, I haven't heard it lately, but possibly that extra penny tax, uh, going towards them, which doesn't raise anything for our, you know, constituents at this time, but it does move some money out of county general. So we have those shortfalls to worry about. Obviously we've already commuted, talked about, uh, 911 communications and EMS. So we have a lot on our plate this year. And I'm just so thankful for the team we have in place because I know we'll be able to get through this together. So thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Jessica.
Scott?
Yes.
Well, I've been kind of in a, in a unique position that I have, I have been an office holder in the county building, had, had employees. So I, I've had to look at this from, from a couple of different sides. I've had some pretty heated discussions with one elected official, uh, who happens to be related to me. You know, we, we talked it out and, uh, I, I've been so proud of the office holders that, that have kept their offices going. And I know, I know with the reduced staff and, and I, I know there's, there's some discussion about some working and, and some not working and still getting paid. But, uh, you know, I guess it's not a perfect world. If it was a perfect world, we could, uh, you know, we'd settle this virus to start with. But anyway, I have been so proud of, uh, from the commissioners, uh, to my fellow councilman, Jason, uh, Kyle. We are so fortunate to have that, that caliber of, of people. I, I just talked with Jessica last night about how fortunate we were to have Kyle and to have Jason and, and how fortunate we are to have been able to keep them, uh, for what we pay them. But, uh, I certainly want them to know and, and everybody else know that we do appreciate, appreciate their efforts. I think they're going to raise the stay at home here in Florida at the end of this month, which will be Thursday. And so by mid-May, I will be able to come home. And, um, anything that I can do to help anybody at that time, uh, I, I will certainly be at your service.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Yes. I would like to thank all the employees that's had to work, that hasn't been able to be off, essential workers. And some of them that probably isn't essential have worked. So I just want to thank all of them.
Thank you, Mary. Well, again, thank, thank you all. Again, I look forward to the time when we can all sit together and hopefully that, uh, hopefully that comes soon. So, uh, if we don't have anything else, I guess at this point I'll ask for a motion to, uh.
Hey, Scott?
Yeah.
Um, just so you, everyone's aware, I've been refreshing and we have not received any public comment emails.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we recess or adjourn?
I think we recess, don't we?
Yeah, that's up to you guys. Uh, I've got a, a recess or adjourn on my menu. If we need to be able to meet, the rules are going to be changing, uh, here along with, things as we go forward. And it may be in our best interest to, uh, to recess in case we need to get this meeting back open for any kind of, uh, urgency situation. I'll leave that.
To recess.
Okay. We got a motion from Jane, second.
I think Ryan got that.
Ryan, okay, to recess. Roll call please. Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Frank Bush.
Yes.
Yes. That concludes our meeting for today. Thank you, guys.
Everybody, stay safe.
Stay safe. Take care, friends.
Thanks, everybody.